I'm all call the October ninth, two thousand fourteen, regular meeting of the Dixon County Commissioners to order. Would you please rise and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two items to add to the consent agenda. First of all, the deadline to receive and open the plumbing bids for the Navarre.
Actually, we're gonna have another week, so we're gonna have to, yeah.
Okay.
We didn't get, they didn't get the bids in like they planned, so.
Okay. So, we'll strike that then. And the only other item is if our attorney does happen to be here today, we'll go ahead and have a, an executive session at the, towards the end of the meeting. So, with just that one addition possible, I'd move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
You have the motion in the second for approval of the amended agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda, this includes the minutes of October second work session and the regular meeting, the payroll of two hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars and seventy-eight cents, fund expenditures of two hundred thousand, ninety-three dollars and eighty-four cents, wire payments of a hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred five dollars and eighty-four cents.
I may we can approve the consent agenda?
Second.
So, we have the motion in the second for approval of the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll go ahead and start with Craig on Commissioner comments and committee reports.
Yeah, Brad and I attended the Solomon Community Center about our sales tax issue. It's gonna be on the ballot in November. Good participation, there was probably fifteen to twenty people, somewhere near.
I'd say a hundred and forty.
Yeah, yeah. And then I did attend, went over to the DS No Open House at Solomon last night, spent a couple hours over there. It's kind of amazing that I was talking about the sales tax issue with some people there and they, you know, don't, didn't know anything about it. I mean, it's, so, it's, I don't wanna say, well, this is beautiful, but, but, and these were people I thought would've, you know, I had to ring up to them, they didn't ask me about, you know, I said, you know, I wanted, so, I don't know. Hopefully, we're getting the information out there and they'll, I think, well, I know, we see these commissioners, the one percent, you know, we went to the road tour with John last week going after the meeting. I'm not sure, you know, I don't know, one million dollars is gonna do a lot of good, but that's, get a start, but it's gonna have to be used wisely and prudently to get the best bang for our buck. Brad and I will be attending County Community Center tomorrow at noon, so, that's how that goes. That's all I have, Lynn. Nothing on the computer.
All right. Yeah, the, last week, I did take the road tour. I guess it is a little experiment, we, we're driving down the road, you know, and you kinda think, well, this is a good road, and then you stop and get out and really look at the road when you're walking on it, and it's a totally different road when you, when you actually get out and see the cracks and the deterioration, but, like I say, it is a little deceiving, and I know it is on bridges if you drive across the top and it looks good, but when you look underneath, well, then you see some problems. So, it is good to get out and actually visualize those things so that we kinda know where we're at on them. I did Friday attend the groundbreaking ceremony for the new Eisenhower Grade School at Abilene's building, and there was quite, a pretty good turnout for a cold morning there, and the school, some of the school kids, I think, really got, had a lot of fun doing that also because they, they, it's something they will always remember after the school is built, that they, they got to participate in the groundbreaking. Brad and I Tuesday, I guess, went to Harrington for the senior citizens to talk about the sales tax with them, and I know they're in a tough position over there because they've already added to their sales tax in, in the town of Harrington, with the hospital and other things, so, but I do think it's important that we do inform the people about what we, our concerns are with, with roads and bridges, so, anyway, it's, I still think it's worthwhile to, we had a lot of, kind of, questions in answer session with them, and so, and I think that's good, too.
I also was on the, kind of, on the tour in regards to the sales tax, and I had, you know, previously attended a meeting with Brad where he had given a lot of the information out with the Quanis group, and then he was meeting with other groups, and so, I, along with John Goff, attended the Abilene Rotary Club, and then also yesterday, the Lyons Noon Luncheon Group in Abilene. I was there with Martin Tannahill, and I thought we really had people interested in what the issue was, and when you look at the economic impact that the roads and the infrastructure have for our county and the importance, and, and the, the bridges that everyone uses from emergency personnel to the school bus routes for all of the school districts in the county, and then all of us, you know, people on daily basis using those roads. I thought everybody seemed, you know, very interested in, and so, I was glad we had some good questions as far as the information. And of course, you know, we don't ask for a show of hands, somebody would support this or not, but, you know, the interest level and trying to be informed on the issue, that piece was there, and that's the part that we need, I think, to explain this issue. The only other things, and we have that coming up, there's a Military Affairs Council breakfast, and that's actually a couple weeks out, but I'll plan on attending that. So, that's all I have. We do not have any proclamations today, and so, go ahead and move right on to Brad, if you go ahead and give us your report, please.
Okay. At the end of your agenda today, you have a resolution to pass that is the final, I believe what will be the final resolution, that approves the bonds for the Detroit Sewer District Number Three, the Dixon County Sewer District Number Three in Detroit. It's been a long, about a three-year process, and a lot of paperwork signed over that period of time by, by the commissioners and other people, so it's good to get that done behind us, so, it'll be the last big, we'll have to deal with on that for some time. Janelle was also providing us the year-to-date budget reports, which, looking at those and others, I don't see any in town at this point. We did do, purchased no lead fuel this week and took bids, and there's quite a notable difference between the two bids, but we've seen it happen before when we get one of the vendors that's just got word that their prices were dropping, and we were able to get in on that, and it's extremely beneficial. That's also kind of a temp outside, and if I watch out the window, I can see within the next ten to twelve hours, it's gonna drop at the pump publicly, which it has dropped quite a bit here in the last, last few days, so.
Yeah. First time I bought fuel into three dollars for a long, long time.
Yeah, and our forecasters say that it's supposed to kinda stay there till the first of the year, which would really be nice, I hope the forecaster, I, you have a question, Craig?
Yeah, I'm just, just on our Dixon County bounce here, Brad, I mean, you went, and I looked at it before. I mean, I look at our, you know, with what we're gonna spend, an estimated ending balance of four, four point oh eight one million and stuff, is that, you know, and I should have last year, is that kinda where we're, I mean, we're being able to, I mean, are we making just a little more money? I should say making, that's not the correct word.
Carrying over?
Yeah, carrying over just a little more.
Maybe just a little bit.
Okay, well, I mean, I have no problem with it.
The projection, the projections are always a little bit off.
Yeah, good educated guess.
But if I recall, last year, we carried over by three point eight. I remember I had just done that.
That's right, yeah.
Which is, you know, that four mark is, is what previous commissions have said years ago, is that, you know, twenty-five to thirty percent mark, they like to see us in the, in the safe zone, so.
And then back on the tentative budget report, I know the, I'm not gonna make, like the fact is that this commission is probably spending a little more on travel, and so, we're gonna have to adjust the budget a little more money in there next year for that, or...
For, for the commission's expense?
Yeah, expense, yeah, mm-hmm. Well, like, commission expense, one pays to their tentative, yeah, that's, you know, we're, we're at thirty percent. Right now.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we could adjust it a little bit, we typically got enough buffer in the administration one that we can pick up anything extra, too.
Well, yeah, and, and we talked earlier, you know, and I, if, next year, if, I think it's, if one of us wanted, I don't think all three of us would wanna go, but the national conference, it can't be out, and that's probably minimum fifteen hundred dollars, you know, and...
Yeah, if we, whatever decided to do that, and, you know, I think it would be good for one of us, you know, to attend that and maybe kinda alternate that, so.
I think it would be good.
I know some, some counties, all three of them go, you know, and I don't know that that's necessary.
I wouldn't, I think I would be prudent for, you know, taxpayers, you know, I would...
But, you know, it's, I, I've talked to some of them that do go to it, and, you know, I just have to ask them, you know, what the benefits are going, and he's, one of them said, "Well, you know, we're more or less just tuned in to how Kansas operates." He said, "When you go to the national," he said, "You realize every state operates a little differently," and he said, "There's some ideas that you can gain that other states might be doing that we don't typically do in Kansas," and so, from that perspective, he thought it was broadened his, you know, range of ideas a little bit, but, I, I know Sheila was an officer, she did go, but that was probably paid by the state.
It was paid by the national.
So, I don't know, in past history, you don't know if anyone's, has no...
You know, I don't recall anybody ever going, Sheila was actually a couple of them, Nico paid for her expenses, so.
But I think Nico, like I say, and sometimes we might pick and choose because some of them might be close enough we could drive to, which, you know, would save some money, too.
I don't know where next year's is at, this year's was a little, you know, one or two.
I think it's in Charlotte, North Carolina, and then I think the next one's in California. There might be vice versa, but...
Not in him real close, yeah.
Sometimes it's just better if you get a good airfare, too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably would've, good, good airfare price, probably cheaper on the ground most of the time. Yeah, I mean, we can look at that adjusted if we need to, but we, we should have enough for our...
Yeah, I mean, if it wouldn't cause a problem if one of them, okay, yeah.
No, no.
Okay.
We've got the dates for the next planning of the new institution class, and we're getting registered for that, I sent that message to Craig into Sheriff Hoffman, Sheriff Swisher, so, I provided you forms in your packet for the vaccinations, Monday is our staff in-service day. We've got a pretty good day scheduled.
What are they doing that first thing?
They're doing that first thing in the line, yeah, so, if you think you're gonna be tied up, wanna commit for that, you can, or we can get you scheduled to get it anytime, you know, we don't stop by the health department if you don't wanna commit just for that, so it's up to you. I could probably get, be able to get it to me, I can stick you anytime, so, we'd like to.
Lynn, are you gonna be attending after, on Monday?
I am.
Okay, so, we'll make sure that...
For, for a portion of the early...
Oh, yeah, but I mean, we'll, you know, on the website that we will be attending.
Yeah, I, I'll probably come in at least, maybe get the shop, and if it rains like they say it is, I'll probably have a long time on my hands.
Might swim, man. But we've got a really good day packed, planned, a lot of it has to do with training, it's all training for kind of employees, but a lot of the afternoon session part of it will be back here at the courthouse, where we'll actually be doing some of this training, so. Barb has informed us that she was able to certify the valuation, the values for the year, and they came in about three point three million dollars higher in property valuation, which is a good thing for us, I guess, it shows we're continuing to grow and increase. And we've got the letter we talked about, and briefly on the St. Freeman Stroll Hall, we're still battling that, that animal. We've received a number of requests for information from FEMA, some that we felt could be justified, some that we actually feel aren't, and at this point, as of this morning, FEMA is still wants to require us to raise the elevation of that safe room up to the, above the five-hundred year float plane level, which we don't think is, should be required, and so, we'll be working on possibly some alternate avenues on that, but it sure appears doesn't, that they're trying to make it extremely difficult. And as I briefed you into the work session, you know, Solomon had an application, the same thing happened, and they actually threw in the towel on theirs because they just couldn't meet the criteria that FEMA's wanting to place on, so, it appears that they're wanting to put so much, so many requirements on us, that they don't want us to do it either, so, we're a little bit frustrated at this point. We do have, we just finished replacing some tubes up on, in the north part of the county. The guys are moving down to the seventeen hundred block of fourteen hundred Avenue next week, and we're replacing some tubes there. Take a couple days to do that. Then we've got another bridge that was just discovered yesterday at thirteen eighty Quail Road. We actually got a citizen report of a bridge that had some damage underneath it, through the website, we did some checking on that report and found another bridge that has quite a bit of erosion underneath it, so we're gonna need to do something on it pretty quick here after the first of the year, so, we're working on permits and stuff, preliminary permits on that at this point.
And I meant to say something down in the department head meeting, remember we were out at, at the bridge on Chapman Creek there off Quail Road, off Rain Road, friend is still spraying some trees, maybe we could slip...
He is this week, he's been dragged down the tail end of the spring, you know.
Yeah, you might, I meant to mention that, I, I wrote that down and forgot to say something to Randy about it. If they can't get to it, I mean, it's, I think it'd be beneficial to keep the trees from coming up underneath the, the bridge.
And they're paying, just almost a sapling stage or past, I mean, they're, I mean, they're, where the sprain could, could take care of it.
Well, you can kill a tree anytime, you just have to break right down to here.
Yeah, well, that's true, too.
It's all good.
Okay, thank you. I'm just gonna mention a couple of things right now. Doug, we were gonna save about ten minutes at the end for executive session, attorney-client privilege, and I don't know if you had anything else you'd wanna bring up at this time.
Tax sale comes up November the third.
November third on the tax sale, okay.
That publication's already been in the newspaper, passed and notified, so, should be ready to go.
And Barb, that kind of, this, putting me a little bit on the spot, but not really 'cause, 'cause you're, you're well under control on this, but just an update as far as when will the ballots arrive and the advance voting and so on, and everything?
The ballots hopefully will arrive soon, any day now, because advance voting starts October fifteenth, and we mail out ballots that same day, but voting in the courthouse can start on the fifteenth.
And, and if anyone wants to, they can do their advance voting at the courthouse, but also if they wanna submit a request to have you mail out the ballot, they need to...
Right, they can contact our office, or you can go to the website, there's a place where they can actually print out the form and scan it and send it back to us.
Okay, okay, very good. Okay, I'll go ahead and move on to notices and communications we have from the clerk of the district court, and Cindy McDonald just sent us her monthly summary and for our review. We also have a letter from North Central Regional Planning Commission, and of course, Craig is the representative on that board, but what this is in regards to is the North Central Kansas Regional Planning Commission has a banquet set, and this will occur November sixth in Concordia, and we probably need to RSVP on that, and it looks like it's fifteen dollars per person, so that is November sixth, and I'll go ahead and pass this down, so, if we're interested, more than one of us attending, or just one...
Yeah, I, yeah, there's no cost for me, or a guest, so, if one of you wanna go, go with me.
What time is it?
I think, well, the reception starts at five, no, yeah, six.
Okay, so that's...
I think it's six, yeah.
It's an evening, I just wanna make sure we're in, because it's a meeting that's...
Right.
Is that directed meeting day for me?
Yeah, we're gonna have a meeting before the...
I probably won't, you think?
I probably wouldn't either, so...
Yeah, social are five to six, and dinner's at six.
So, if you're the one we're going, we probably don't need to RSVP yet, though.
No, yeah, yeah, 'cause I've, I've already told them I'll be coming.
Okay, thank you. We have a letter, this is Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, and this has to do a notice of hearing for their two thousand fifteen annual action plan. I imagine this was addressed to me, but I, I think all of us individually have received this. It's from Cook Flat and Strobel, and they're inviting us to dinner Thursday, November thirteenth, at the Hyatt Regency in Wichita, and of course, part of the reason for that is we will already be down there, and I think they're, one of the vendors having a booth, but that's when our annual meeting is gonna take place, and that has an RSVP date of the thirtieth of this month, so we've got a little bit of time on that. Also received from the Department of Commerce, and this is really just kind of a housekeeping matter, but it is from their Business and Community Development Department of Commerce, and they're just mentioning that in regards to the Navarre Community Center project that is being utilized with CDBG funds, they are aware that we did attempt to solicit multiple bidders for the heating and air conditioning units, but that we only received one bid, and so they are offering a waiver that it is acceptable for us to just receive one bid since it was made available to multiple bidders. We also have from the Kansas Insurance Department, and they're just advising us that we need to talk to our rural fire departments, this is on the Fire Fighters Relief Association Fund, and there are, we, we need to make sure, or encourage them to go ahead and submit showing their, what they're gonna do with their receipts and disbursements, and once again, this is kind of a housekeeping item that we need to do. This is for the Chapman Rural Fire District.
Brad, you plan on taking care of that, I guess?
Yeah, I'll just, once you give this letter to Brad, so go have that. All right, so you can take care of that follow-up on that. I didn't, I'm sure they've got a deadline, but I didn't look at it on there, but I think they just want us to get it this month, at least. I also have from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and this is in regards to a Kansas water pollution control permit, and the one that we have in there, they send out anything that's been done across the state, but the one in our county is for the city of Abilene, and this is a proposed action to reissue an existing permit for an existing wastewater treatment facility, and so, we'll need to go ahead and have that posted. And I believe that's all that I have. And I haven't received any other comments or communications. And Craig, you mentioned you hadn't, and Laverne.
You won't, though.
Okay. At this time, we'll go to the only resolution that we have, or item of business, and this is regarding our sewer district number three for the issuance of bonds, and the resolution on this is one zero zero nine one four, and this is to be completed and submitted to the secretary in accordance with KDOT, and this is a certificate of the borrower upon project completion. So, are there any questions on that, or Brad, do you have any additional comment on this?
No, that's just basically the one that authorizes you to complete the bond process, so...
Okay. I'll go ahead and make the motion that we adopt Resolution one zero zero nine one four.
I'll second.
We have the motion in the second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I don't believe we have any other business, and so at this time, before adjournment, we're going to go into executive session for attorney-client privilege, and this will be for ten minutes, starting at eleven twenty-six. So, that's my motion.
Second.
We have the motion in the second for executive session for attorney-client privilege for ten minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'll go ahead and move to the regular session.
I'll put it down.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
We have the motion and the second to return to regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the, we just had some discussion on attorney-client privilege and just kind of on a waiting pattern. And so it was a good discussion. At this time, any other business? Otherwise, a motion for adjournment?
Somebody.
We do have some papers to sign.
Well, Leah needs, there's one for each of you. She needs the highlighted information, and she needs a copy of your current driver's license. I believe this is for banking stuff. So there's, there's papers for each, there's a pile for each of you. I shouldn't say pile, there's two pages.
And I guess we're bonded and all that, so then our checks, our signature stamp appears on checks occasionally. Okay, Craig, there's yours.
Occasionally.
Well, Laverne's more than the rest of us, because you've been here longer.
Hmm.
Okay. We'll take care of that then. Any?
This needs to come back to Leah.
I think I'll just film one out one here, so. Okay, is there a motion for adjournment?
Sorry, so moved it.
Yeah.
We have the motion, sorry, didn't hear it before. And all seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned.